Good morning, everyone. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. Welcome to City Hall this morning. Before we start our official business, we have an important recognition of honoring Black History Month, and I'll turn it over to Council Vice President Jenkins and my colleagues to read this resolution and tell us a little more about it.
Good morning, everyone. And I know there are people trying to make their way in here, including Councilmember Cunningham. But it's really my honor to, once again, be able to author and support and share a resolution honoring Black History Month. And I will just read it as it appears here on the page. And we just left an amazing breakfast that was sponsored and hosted by M.BEN, the Black Employee Network here at the city of Minneapolis. And it was just an incredible feeling to be in a room with all of our colleagues and the mayor and other city staff and just recognize the important and historic contributions that African-Americans have made to the city of Minneapolis, to the United States of America, and subsequently to the entire world. Oh, we do want to acknowledge that Councilmember Worsami is not here today, but we will be sharing his remarks as well. So, whereas since 1926, the creation of Negro History Week by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the accomplishments of persons of African descent have been recognized each February, and...
Whereas the month of February is observed nationally as Black History Month to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments Black Americans have made and continue to offer to this nation, and...
Whereas Black History Month acknowledges and honors numerous past and present educators, scientists, activists, pioneers, leaders, artists, inventors, entrepreneurs, and elders with special ceremonies and activities, and...
Whereas in 2016, to celebrate Black History Month, the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights introduced Future History Makers, renamed History Makers at Home, a profile series featuring emerging and mid-career leaders from the Twin Cities African-American community who share the department's ideals of advancing civil rights and removing barriers to equality, and...
Whereas the department identifies trendsetters in the areas of business, criminal justice, education, economic development, health, philanthropy, housing, and government, and define them as History Makers at Home. And whereas the department also recognizes the kinship of the work of trendsetting History Makers to those who are legacy trailblazers, and...
Whereas to support and foster our own History Makers at Home in the City of Minneapolis Enterprise, an employee resource group to support Black city employees, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network was created on February 23, 2017. And whereas each week throughout Black History Month, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network uplifts History Makers at Home, hosting events that shine the light on dedicated leaders in the Twin Cities region and shares the stories of those who are making a positive impact and inspiring future generations, as well as recognizes legacy leaders who have paved the path, and...
Whereas on February 23, 2020, the Minneapolis Black Employee Network will proudly celebrate its three-year anniversary. And whereas the Minneapolis Black Employee Network offers Black city employees pure support, mentoring, professional development, career counseling, and well-being supportive services, and...
Whereas the Minneapolis Black Employee Network offers the city of Minneapolis recommendations on action plans to recruit, retain, support, and engage Black leaders to the city's workforce, and...
Whereas Black history and the contributions of peoples of African descent are honored and uplifted at the city of Minneapolis, not only in the month of February, but throughout the entire year. Namely, the city recognizes the National Day of Racial Healing each year by city council resolution and activities that tell the story of our ancestry and continued work towards racial justice and Black liberation in the United States of America, and...
Whereas the city of Minneapolis, in partnership with Hennepin County and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, recognizes and celebrates the Week of Juneteenth activities to commemorate June 19, 1865, when all enslaved persons in the United States of America were determined free and entitled to natural-born human rights under the law. And whereas each year in July, we celebrate Black Business Week, created in 2019 by promoting the city's Directory for and encouraging patronage of Black-owned businesses, and bring city officials, leaders of economic development organizations, and members of the business and broader community together to address the unique experiences of Black business leaders. This is an effort to increase ownership, funding opportunities, and business technical assistance for Black entrepreneurs, and...
Whereas each year, we will continue to highlight dedicated Black leaders in the city of Minneapolis and the Twin Cities region.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby commemorate the achievements of Black Americans as History Makers and as legacy trailblazers and their role in the development of the region and the nation since its inception. And we join in recognizing the annual celebration of Black History Month and the anniversary of the Minneapolis Black Employee Network. Thank you. And thank you to all of the Black city employees that make our city work every day. Thank you so much. Velma, would you like to say a few words?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Velma Corbell. I'm the director in the Minneapolis Department of Civil Rights. I'm also the executive sponsor for the Minneapolis Black Employee Network, and I want to first thank Council President, Council Vice President Jenkins, Councilmember Jeremiah Ellison, Councilmember Philippe Cunningham, Councilmember Abdi Worsami. Thank you. I just wanted to say very quickly that it's always a privilege to be in the chamber, especially on the day we launch our activities for Black History Month, and so I will let you know what the activities for Black History Month are. So, on February 6, first of all, every Thursday at noon, we would like you to join us in the rotunda for some really amazing events featuring speakers, dance, spoken word, music. It's just going to be great. But on February 6, the first Thursday of February, our first event is titled Call to Action. The speaker that day is Lisa Jones. On February 13, we are Empowering Youth that day. We're going to have some steppers from some local organizations and some schools here. Our keynote speaker that day is Tracy Williams-Dillard from the Spokesman Recorder. On February 20, we're honoring our History Makers at Home, and Deborah Watts from the Emmett Till Legacy Foundation is the keynote speaker that day. On February 27, we have a panel that is going to feature Shannon Jones from Hope Community, Rich Chapman from WCCO Radio, Erica Coleman, one of our local celebrities here in the city of Minneapolis from Community Planning and Economic Development, and someone from the NAACP. We're also this year, for the first time, anchoring all of our events with an exhibit in the tunnel level of the Hennepin County Government Center. We are celebrating the 85 years of the Minnesota Spokesman Recorder, and that display, that exhibit, will run from today through February 27. And so I am just thrilled to be able to share that information with you. I am just thrilled to be here with this illustrious group of council members, really launching what should be an amazing month of celebration, but 24/7/365, we are all celebrating the history and legacy of Black people in this city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Corbell. We really appreciate all your work in the city, and I want to offer an opportunity for Councilmembers Cunningham and Worsami to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. What I would like to say before we wrap up today is I want to make sure that I, as a council member, thank all of the Black employees who work within city government. As somebody who sits in a position of power as a council member, I know that sometimes I get really exhausted, because this is a system that has been running now for over 150 years, and the system, as it started and accumulated over time, was not made for us. So even though I sit in a position of power, sometimes it really grates at me, too. And so I recognize how those of you who are not sitting in the positions of power such as a council member, how much you have to carry in addition to the work that you have to do, the additional emotional burden of seeing where systemic racism and institutionalized oppression shows up, and then not being able to do as much as you would like to do to be able to overcome that. That additional emotional labor, I just want to say, as a policymaker, I see you, I appreciate you, I know that that work is heavy, and we are here together to move through this work together. So we appreciate you as policymakers, and let's do this, let's stick it out. Thanks, everybody.
Well, thank you to everybody who, you know, put the resolution together, and thank you for those who work for the Black History Month. I don't know why my British accent is coming out tonight, today, but it is. It's actually today, right? You know, I mean, I think about Minneapolis being, you know, a welcoming city, a great city, but yet the city with one of the greatest inequalities between white people and people of color. And being the council member, just like my brother here said, we are, you know, we see the system, and the system does not really change. It's a very powerful entrenched system. When we deal with homelessness, when we deal with housing, when we deal with unemployment, the skills gap, it's always Black people who are struggling. And I think about an Ashante proverb that says, you know, "One must act as if failure is impossible." And I think that's what we have to do. We have to act as if failure is impossible, so that our children, and I have four small Black kids who were born in the city of Minneapolis, and I worry about their future and how will they be facing the same struggles that I have been facing? Probably, because I have been facing the same struggle people have been facing for 400 years in this continent. So, again, it's great to celebrate, you know, our culture and our history and the achievements Black people have made, but there's a long way to go before we reduce it down. Thank you.
They almost forgot about me because I'm light-skinned, but I'm kidding. So what I wanted to say is that I wanted to echo really my North Minneapolis colleague in saying that our legacy can't simply be about who holds these positions of power, right? That because if the legacy of Black people in Minnesota is going to be resigned to who sat on the city council, in my opinion, that's tokenism, right? I think the real legacy is what we've done and what we're doing to prop up the leadership and the power of you all who work on behalf of the city, who serve the people of this city. And that if we can diversify our workforce and have more Black people in this city working for the city, that that's really what's going to make the difference, and that's really what our legacy should be, not, you know, not our name tags up here on this dais. And it's for that reason that I wanted to give the resolution this month to Velma, just to symbolize how that the real legacy of how Black people are going to do in this city can't rest just with us, it really rests with you, with our subject matter experts here in the city, and with all of you who work for the city. So, thank you.
So I just want to take an opportunity to invite all the members of M.BEN up to take a group photo to, you know, as an oral historian, I know the importance of documenting the moment, because if you don't document it, then it didn't exist, right? So come on up, everybody, we need you to come on up, take a group photo. Andrea?
Good morning again. I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'll call to order this regular meeting of the city council for January 31. They can't be on next to each other. I think for some reason all the microphones are turning on.
Because we have to say "President."
Okay. We're going to make that stop happening. Okay. So I'll call the meeting of January 31 to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
President.
Ellison.
President.
Goodman.
President.
Johnson.
President.
Palmasano.
President.
Gordon.
Here.
Pano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
President.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that there is a quorum. The agenda for today's meeting is before us. I'll note that I am not able to get into Speaker Management, so I'll either ask for help doing that or ask folks to use their cards, or Councilor Schrader often helps me when that happens. So we have the agenda before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda from council members? I don't see any. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
That has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the minutes of our regular meeting of January 17 for acceptance. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those minutes are accepted. Finally, I'll entertain a motion to refer the petitions, communications, and reports of the proper committees for the next cycle. Is there a motion for that?
So moved, Madam Chair.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is to receive the reports of the standing committees, and we'll begin with the Committee of the Whole presented by the Chair, Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee of the Whole brings forward two items today. Item number one is the reappointment of David Frank to the appointed position of the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. Item number two is a resolution supporting federal law allowing Census Bureau employees to access multi-unit structures during the 2020 United States Census Count. I move approval on the Committee of the Whole report.
Councilmember Jenkins has moved the committee report, so I will use Councilor Schrader's computer to see if there's any discussion, and Councilor Schrader would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to, on number one, add a resolution that's at everyone's desks. First of all, just in introducing this, I'm proud of the progress that's been made by our Community Planning and Economic Development Department this term, including the work to deploy historic investments in affordable housing, draft and implement the Minneapolis 2040 Plan, and shape transformative policies like the inclusionary zoning. I am supporting David Frank's reappointment today, and I look forward to watching him and our talented CPED staff build on these recent successes. Councilmember Ellison and I are taking this opportunity to honor those successes and affirming many of the commitments that this council has made to economic inclusion, housing affordability, racial equity, and to climate action, and more. Our resolution reflects those commitments, as well as our expectation that they infuse with CPED's work going forward. We have the responsibility to lift up these shared goals, and I believe the leadership we have in place can execute that vision. I look forward to supporting their ongoing success and bringing it to the next level. I also want to highlight my interest in seeing diversity and inclusion, including in the terms of CPED's leadership and reflecting in the coming months and years as our progress has shown through data. I'm eager to see this expanded opportunity and support for small businesses. We have much work yet to do, but I'm confident in this council, and this CPED team will do what it takes to move us toward a more equitable, sustainable city. I want to thank my colleagues, especially also Director Frank, and community members for their collaboration on this resolution and their support in our shared work going forward, and I ask for everyone's support.
Councilmember Schrader has moved a resolution that we have in front of us, and I see a number of council members in queue to speak, and I see Councilmember Goodman has a motion as well. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move to separate the resolution and the potential coming staff direction from the actual item of reappointment.
Right. So Councilmember Goodman has asked us to take this up as a separate item. I think, so I think that's right, let's do that. It sounds like there might actually be another item as well. So we'll just be basically taking these up as separate items that could be thought of as three and four on this agenda. So, in keeping with Councilmember Goodman's suggestion, Councilor Ellison.
Just wanted to make, get some clarity from the clerk that we're, do we not have to like vote on that or anything? Sorry, I just...
So what's before us right now is Councilor Schrader's resolution will be taking that up as a separate item, not as a piece of item one.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to get that clarity. Yeah, just want to echo everything that Councilmember Schrader said. I do think that this was a collaborative effort that maybe didn't start out that way, but we were able to get feedback from staff. And I also wanted to move a staff direction as a part of the resolution, and I can go ahead and read that as well. So Ellison and Schrader move to direct the city's Community Planning and Economic Development Department to form a working group of relevant stakeholders, including but not limited to the Community Planning and Economic Development Department, the Regulatory Services Department, the City Coordinator's Office, and the City Attorney's Office to address the following goals. One, deepen the city's existing relationship with the Minneapolis small business community. Two, explore more non-traditional housing and housing policy options, for example, things that we worked on such as occupancy rates, intentional community cluster developments, and housing cooperatives, I think are in the spirit of that. Number three, increase access to data regarding housing and commercial markets, for example, but not limited to data to track the cost of rent for both housing and commercial property, data to compare income and the cost of rent, et cetera. And so, you know, I wanted to move that staff direction along with the resolution.
Okay. So that staff direction has been moved and seconded. I'm going to suggest that we also take these two items separately, if that's okay with the authors. So that would allow us to return back to the resolution, have any further discussion on that, take that vote, and then come back to the staff direction and do the same. So I have a couple other council members in queue on the resolution brought by Councilor Schrader. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be supporting the reappointment of Mr. Frank, as well as the subsequent resolutions and staff directions. And just want to emphasize my commitment to seeing a more robust agenda for small businesses in the city of Minneapolis, particularly businesses of color and African-American businesses as they are some of the most marginalized businesses in our community and struggle to access the resources necessary to have successful businesses in this city. And I know that it is our role as policymakers, as well as our role as department heads and CPED, to really assist those businesses in being as successful as possible, because we know that it makes our city a much better place to live. So I will be supporting Mr. Frank's reappointment, as well as the subsequent resolution and staff direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I've spent a lot of time on the Minneapolis City Council voting on things that actually talk about making change, but don't actually make the change. And that does seem to be a pattern here, that we want to talk about and admire the problem, rather than actually solving the problem. There have been some very specific incidences where we've solved the problem, but we have lots of statements of what we believe in here, and I'm not going to rise to support this resolution today for a number of reasons. First of all, take a look at the actual resolution under the "be it resolved" clauses that the city council and the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development commit to the shared work of the city. Well, I can tell you that the shared work of this resolution certainly didn't happen. This was sent to me at 5:00 last night with the staff direction at 9:30 last night. I would hardly call that the shared work of the city, and certainly not the shared work of the city council, creating a shared and viable agenda. I'm not sure how this meets that criteria, since we had an EDRS meeting, not this cycle, maybe the last cycle, talking about economic development programs, and this staff direction didn't come up, and this resolution didn't come up. And we have a meeting coming up on Tuesday where we could very easily take this staff direction up instead of having a handful of people scurry around 3:07, rounding up votes, ignoring those that they think might have a concern, and passing it on the floor today, all in the context of everyone saying they want to support David Frank. So it seems a little odd to me that we want to support David Frank, and that's the next item, supporting staff, but yet we want to support staff, but we kind of want to shame them, too. And we want to prove that we care about what we think we care about by shaming David in the context of a reappointment. I find that to be despicable. Providing more resources and funding to this priority work, it says on here, we just passed a budget like five minutes ago. Not one person here said, "Let's put more money into any of these economic development priorities." Maybe a few here and there, but very few. There were no amendments about adding money to PED to do any of this work. So that seems a little hypocritical that we just went through a budget process, and this says we provide more resources, but we just had the opportunity to provide more resources, and no one brought that up. And I think most importantly, on the last paragraph, on the last part of this resolution, it says to foster a culture of openness and transparency and mutual respect among staff within the department, between staff and policymakers, and with small businesses and residents. I guess I would point out that this certainly does not foster a culture of openness and transparency and mutual respect between staff and policymakers by bringing this up today in the context of Mr. Frank's appointment, outside of the committee process, without including everyone on the city council. That's how I feel about it. And as much as I support Mr. Frank's reappointment, and I do, I think this level of public shaming has gone too far, and I was not going to sit quietly and let that moment pass, and you shouldn't either. And you shouldn't either.
Thank you. Councilmember Connaught.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. Trying to get used to this new microphone setup. So on this, on this specific topic, I definitely will be voting to approve Director David Frank's appointment. I've had the opportunity, and I would say the privilege, to be able to work with many talented CPED staff over the last six years, and I feel like I've learned a lot in developing those relationships and understanding how to govern better, how to bring this togetherness better in our body of work as we face a lot of situations that oftentimes would trigger, I think, a knee-jerk reaction to separate and divide and to really elevate things to a level that perhaps isn't necessary. So I want to lean on that experience here today. I want to be mindful of the timing and the process that brought us to this specific conversation today regarding a resolution. I just want to share with my colleagues for the public record that, because I know we all didn't have the same experience with the conversation of the resolution on Wednesday, that roughly three hours before we were to get together for a very contentious Committee of the Whole meeting regarding a ward project in my district, which is a city project regarding roof depot and the expansion of the water yard, and also three hours before we were due to approve and talk about the public charge ruling that the Supreme Court has brought out against our immigrant community members, I am all of a sudden presented with some draft language on a resolution relating to this very issue. And I'll have to say that that's not my preference for doing this kind of work. That's not my, that's not how I believe good governance happens. That's not how we get good results. That's not how we work together in unison to achieve the metrics and the outcomes that our communities rightly deserve and that I would say they are getting through the approval of things like inclusionary zoning back in the day when we approved ADUs under Council Member Bender's leadership, through the comp plan, which we have been, as a city, applauded for nationally, even featured in the New York Times, the Corcoran Five, the work we've been doing tirelessly for that community for so many years now. I feel like there's significant work happening under the rubric of cultural districts and certainly under the recent evaluation of how our small business team is doing and the reconfiguration of that team, even within CPED itself. So for me, I don't feel confident that this resolution represents and symbolizes the best way that we can work together. I was personally just distraught that something like that would be brought forward with such significance on such a short amount of time with no one's name on it. There was no clarity about whether anyone was bringing this up at how or not, no co-authors listed, just a draft resolution floated around. So everyone's scrambling at the last minute trying to figure out, is this coming today? Is this coming tomorrow? Is this coming Friday? Is this coming next week? And to me, that's just, there's too much chaos and too much division right now for me to be able to digest that. And I just feel like I'm committed to doing the work with CPED. I have been doing that work. I feel like many of us have been doing that work. I think we need to be doing a better job of communicating that work effectively to the impacted stakeholders. So luckily, each one of us, each one of us as councilmembers has the opportunity to choose the way in which we want to work with staff, to choose the way in which we want to govern, to choose the way in which we want to engage with one another, to bring the city of Minneapolis forward. And I'm just choosing not to work through this resolution today because I don't think it symbolizes the proper process and participation that we want to see. Ultimately, a lot of times, I feel like many of us want to participate in shaping an initiative, having our voice at the table, making sure that our thoughts and considerations are being taken into account because we represent 30,000 people, all of us represent 30,000 people on this body. And so I feel like part of this is, I didn't get to participate. I wasn't asked or invited to be a part of the table. There wasn't enough time to put this together in a way where I feel like the 30,000 people that I represent are reflected in this motion or in this move. So I'm going to continue to look at the issues that are being brought up. I will continue to engage with CPED on these, and we will continue to drive our good work forward and fix the things that need to be fixed. But we are doing a lot of really good work, and I would like us to do a better job of acknowledging that at the same time that we acknowledge the things that we would like to work on and improve. So happy to support our CPED director, who I think we're very lucky to have, and his leadership team, supporting them to make sure that we can continue to work together to improve things and to keep highlighting the efforts that are having really positive impacts in our district. But unfortunately, I cannot get behind this resolution today, and I did let many of you know that, my concerns on Wednesday.
There you go. Thank you. Councilmember Plamasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to appreciate the authors of this resolution in that when you did send this out to me, when I did get notice of it, I did reach out to you and you responded right away. That was last night. We had some conversations. I do fear, though, that it's misleading to say that this had the involvement of everyone. I felt very much so this week that people were being couriered around our council hallways, sneaking around, like not telling me anything about this resolution. I know that we're working really hard. I'm working really hard to recruit leaders in this city in executive positions of government, like our city attorney, like a city coordinator, or a new CFO. I don't think this is how we want to show that we're going to work with them. Today, Director Frank deserves our support, period. This isn't the way that we want to show that we work with a department, let alone several departments, on the fly at the last minute. One of the best things about this director, and I have had lots of disagreements with him over the past year and a half, one of the best things about this director is his responsiveness. Sure, he has thick skin, but his whole department, the Wednesday version of this resolution that was floating around, that this has most of the same content, but the tone has very much changed, hit the people working every day in his department in the gut. And I don't think that's how we want to operate around here. This is a value-affirming resolution, and I agree with these values. But will we be doing this for every department head's reappointment? Will we be, will we be operating in this way? I support these values, but they also, to me, I have a problem in that they feel like policy priorities to me. For example, yes, we must prioritize the extremely important 30% AMI. But I'd like to tweak it and add an "and" argument, like we should strive to do both, add affordable housing to areas that haven't seen investments historically, and add affordable housing to areas that have been inaccessible to lower-income individuals in the past. If we agree the investments that we're making now aren't enough, then we shouldn't limit ourselves to any one or two areas of the city. And I really struggle with some of the ways that we're saying we're doing these things, and I don't know how a department or a department head should take this in regards to all the other previous direction that we have. There's not a reason that this cannot come through the right way, and I know Director Frank well enough to know that he'll show up to your office and talk about it. I won't be supporting this resolution or staff direction, but I absolutely support the reappointment of David Frank. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmore Ellison.
I wanted to just make a few points. One was that, you know, I agree with some of our colleagues here who have said, you know, we often can have a habit, maybe not even just this council, but councils in general can have a habit of affirming values and not following them up. But I think that that's exactly what the staff direction is intended to do. I think that, you know, we're voting on the resolution and I'll be supporting that. But I also think that it's not just on us to engage in any kind of like finger wagging or anything like that. We've got to be in the mix, and we've got to jump feet first into working with departments to sort of meet these values. And I think that that's what we're doing, and I don't think that it's, I wouldn't describe it as public shaming or flogging. And I also would mention that, you know, I spent the better part of last year, and I wasn't the only one working on things like the Commercial Property Development Fund. We got an amazing recommendation from our staff for that. And so this isn't the first time that we're talking about economic development issues or even, or even getting innovative with how we pursue those things. But I just want to, but I also want to highlight that, and I highlighted this the other day on Wednesday, that in some ways, we have made leaps, but I think that we, I think that we can develop an overall strategy and understanding, and I think there are some things that we're doing that people don't, that the community, that are unknown to the community, and that we could, in addition to making a plan for how to, for how to move forward in exacting these values and making a plan with how to collaborate with departments to reach these values and not just kind of, you know, leaving them with just statements of value. I think that we, I think that we can be, I think that we can engage in that process, and I think that we should, and I think that that's why we're bringing this forward today. But I just wanted to affirm that this isn't the first time that we're bringing this. I think this year, last year's budget did have some of those things, some of these concerns around economic development represented, and I think it's important that we continue that forward. Just wanted to name that.
Thank you. Councilmore Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. And I appreciate the resolution coming forward. I know that we all have feelings and there's all relationships up here, and I also know that sometimes we can use that to try to make the case for maybe what we particularly might want or not want. But I've observed this appointment process since the beginning, and I don't know if people noticed when it was at the executive committee that there was a little hiccup. There were obviously concerns, and there was more interest in this department maybe than ever before. I've been meeting with people in my community for weeks and months, coming to my open office hours to talk about particular concerns with areas that are highlighted in this resolution. I think we've had conversations since executive committee about it, like analyzing it, looking at it. We certainly paused, so we had time to do a full review and we got together. I think what this resolution is doing is respectfully and honestly taking an action as a group here that reflects the values and the sentiments of the department, the council, and our community that's come forward. I'm not sure if people recall the public hearing that we had a few days ago on this, but there was lots of conversation and there was lots of discussion. And it was actually exciting and motivating to see that we had more people caring about this. We had somebody who went to great length to create this amazing visual about what the department does and the number of employees and the mission and the vision of the different divisions. And all of a sudden, we have enthusiasm from, coming from our small businesses and residents and community organizations saying, "What can we do to make CPED work better to serve our community?" And it seemed like a committee of the whole, it was clear to everybody that, yes, things are different in a city when people are leaving it and there isn't any development coming. And we have been wrestling right now what to do when it's very different than it was in the 80s and 90s and early 2000s, when we actually have people coming into our city and the market is, I don't know what the right word is, but it's very hot and it's dominating. And what we, I think, admitted and clearly heard from community and from the great leadership of our department is, we need to do more to guide and manage development or even intervene with the market in some cases so we make sure it's serving the people of Minneapolis. And I think that we looked for a consensus point. I'm not sure if any of you were visited by small business association groups in the course of all of this, but they certainly, I saw them talking to people. They came forward with lots of ideas. I think they got incorporated into this resolution. But I also really appreciate that we looked at what is consistent with what we've already stated in our goals, and we certainly want to prioritize serving those whose needs are greatest, especially people of color. We certainly want to increase innovation, and we've been trying to do that for a long time. We want to build our capacity to make change quickly, also wisely and thoughtfully. We want to recognize the need to boldly intervene in the market. These are things we talk about, these are things that we're doing, and these are things that we want to do more of. Certainly, some of the asks we got the community were to make bigger, deeper policy changes, and we need to talk about that and figure that out. But we definitely want to increase and embrace the equity and diversity inside the department to reflect growing diversity of community we serve. That's in our Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan. Why don't we state that right now so we can raise that up even more and emphasize that more? We want to foster a culture of openness and transparency and mutual respect. We have one. We have a leader who's amazingly transparent in the department and wants to foster that as well. We want to continue to emphasize environmental sustainability in our work. We better, we just declared a climate emergency, and we want to evaluate the success of our interventions because we know that we need to use data and find out if what we're trying to do actually works. Those are things we are doing, those are things that community wants us to do, those are things that the leadership in the Community Planning and Economic Development want us to be working on. And what a great opportunity to make a statement like this at the time we're committing, recommitting to our director and staff and all this work. So I'll support the resolution. I think rather than saying it's doing anything negative, it's actually showing we respect one another. We can hear from one another, and we can come together and say what we share and what we want to move forward on together. And it's actually kind of, I think, empowering for the community, and it can be done in a respectful way with each other up here.
Thank you. I put myself in queue, and I see a number of councilmembers also waiting, so, but I think I will take the time now to speak just as a councilmember on this issue and one who's worked very, very closely with CPED over the time that I've had the chance to serve on the City Council. During that time, I have seen department heads at times be very highly scrutinized. In fact, I think in a way that was much more personal than I've seen this time, and those leaders happen to be women. It's potentially a coincidence. But I actually have noticed that in this time, advocates or councilmembers or folks expressing concern about a very large and complex department that's going through a lot of change have taken great care not to be personal and to really focus on values, on direction, on leadership going forward. I've made no secret of my frustrations with some of the work that has happened in CPED over the last number of years. And I think another thing I have seen in my time in office is that there are moments where there becomes more friction between the systems in a department and the direction that policymakers want to go. I saw that when it took eight years to write a complete streets policy that said we prioritize the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists as the most vulnerable users in our city. There was extreme tension between staff and policymakers, and I don't think that meant anyone was bad or good. It just meant that there was, there were structural barriers to change, and I think also skepticism about whether or not the difference in policymaker direction was going to last. It took a couple of election cycles for folks to really say, like, okay, we, this is a new direction we're going to go, there's public support. And so that kind of change takes time. I saw friction with regulatory services, with folks being evicted, with questions about how we're maintaining and inspecting properties. I've seen huge change in that department in recent years with lots of leadership from staff, but there's been friction there too, between community, between policymakers, in changing structures that whether or not they were designed intentionally that way have had the effect of exacerbating, you know, poor living conditions for people of color, for low-income people in our community. And so I think when we're taking on structural systems that need to change, it's important to keep returning to these kinds of values that are described in the resolution that we're discussing now. And I take that as the intention of this, this resolution, that in a discussion about one particular decision, about a leader in our city, that we're grounding ourselves in the values that we hope this large and complex department with hundreds of employees that has dramatic impact on the day-to-day lives of people who live and work and own businesses in our city will bring forward into the future. And it's no, it's really stating the obvious to say that we have a lot of work to do, that many more people than the folks who took the time to come to our public hearing have expressed fear and frustration about the direction our city is going, that they don't see themselves in the massive growth and change that we've seen in our community, that they're afraid of losing their homes or businesses. These are not new themes that we've heard, and what I think we heard over the last, you know, couple of weeks was a desire... And what I think we heard over the last, you know, couple of weeks was a desire that the leadership of our department take that to heart, center that in the work of the department, make hard changes if necessary to help us relieve some of that tension and friction to help rebuild trust in communities that don't have it, with government in particular, and in this case with our planning department or elected officials working on those issues. So all that to say, I have taken a lot of this conversation to be about the direction of a department that has so much influence on people's lives, that is overseeing a billion dollars' worth of growth and change in our city every year, now more, last year more, and who we are relying on going forward to make sure that all of these commitments that we have made, that we will grow in a way that centers race equity, that centers climate change, that will innovate in a way that no other city in the country has been able to do, that that requires bold leadership. And when we ask for bold leadership, we as elected officials have to have your back. We have to be there to say, yeah, we might need to make some hard changes. We might need to rethink how we've been approaching things. And so that is my intention of supporting this, these words that we have in front of us, this resolution, is to say that as a councilmember, through many conversations with Mr. Frank, I trust in your leadership to bring our department and our community forward in a way that prioritizes these values. I appreciate the way that you've humbly approached the questions and concerns. It's meaningful. I think when we hear a desire for change to show up in a way that is open, and you have done that, I think, beyond what may have even been necessary. I think you've been so open and so willing to listen to concerns, to meet with councilmembers, to talk with us, to talk with community members. It has helped me get to a place where I feel trust in the direction of the department under your leadership more than I did when we started the conversations. So thank you for your willingness to engage in those difficult conversations, thanking for your willingness to, you know, sign on to this vision along with the councilmembers who work to bring it forward. And I'll stop there and see a number of councilmembers in queue, and next is Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to also say, you know, to my colleagues that felt that this kind of went fast, that it was, there was, as Councilmember Gordon talked about, there's been concerns and talk, but no clarity that staff could actually act on. And when Councilmember Ellison and I jumped in earlier this week, you know, our priority was staff, and that limited how much time we could talk to our colleagues. Both of us like to be more transparent and more collaborative, but apologize about the timeline. But what we came out with was something that we worked with staff that they drafted, that they came up with. When we got that, as I sent in the email last night, we didn't change a word. It was something that staff went through. I also want to applaud the director for having a collaborative process with his own staff to come up with something that kind of reflects our intention, and hopefully it does that. But I also want to ground us, you know, that those concerns are reflective of a couple truths, and one is that we have some of the worst disparities in the country. And we hear time and time again at our public hearings that we're not doing enough. And that's on all of us. And it's a complex story because there's a lot of things that we see is happening. We see the hard work, we see the multiple hours that CPED puts in above and beyond for something that may not work out. We get to cheer when things go right, but it is a really hard job, and not all of that is clear. And so when we hear that we're not doing enough, like, we have to be able to explain the rest of that story. And we're not set up to do that. And some of that is, we all inherited the system. You know, we didn't help build it, but we are now. So this, the intention of this resolution is to really work on actually making change. I think it is something that it's not just about us in these seats, it's not about who comes after or came before, but it is about making a system that's more equitable, it's making a system that can actually create a city that's more resilient and more equitable than the one we have now.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that I support these values and the intention of the underlying resolution staff direction as a policymaker, as a representative of the, one of the communities in our city that are home to the worst disparities in the country, as well as a black person who has had to navigate these sort of systemic harms myself. Overall, as we have reappointments come before us as a city council, what that does is that raises our consciousness in the way that we would like to see departments better align with our values and operate in a way that we would like with the level of urgency, the values alignment, and so on. What is included in the resolution are pretty significant policy directions. And while many, if not most, of us agree with these, this is the kind of resolution that really should have all of the councilmembers' names on it. I know that that may seem procedural, but when we bring this sort of big direction forward, that is the kind of, I would like to be able to sign on and represent my part of North Minneapolis in this sort of direction. Further, I have concerns about the lack of structure, outcomes, timeline, and expectations in the staff direction. But I just want to name again that, like, I support the underlying values and the intention, and I have spoken in favor of all of this work, supporting BIPOC, business, small business owners in my ward, and really building a small local economy to reverse a lot of institutional harms as well as build generational and familial wealth. All of that has been a massive priority for me as a councilmember. But I think as policymakers, we need to be united when it comes to this sort of work that we are asking for this major department to undertake. And so, Madam President, if it's okay, I would like to make a motion to, well, first to, I believe that additional time will allow more engagement with committees as well as flesh out the staff direction. So I would like to make a motion to delay items three and four to report back to the EDRS Committee on February 18th, 2020. This is with due respect to the authors and the intention under it, I just think that a little bit more time can help.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved a motion to postpone, it would actually be a motion to refer the item to committee.
Oh, okay.
Which has a second. I will note and ask, so I'll see if there's any discussion on the motion. I will note that CPED reports to three committees, EDRS, HPD, and zoning and planning. So I'll just, I'll just note that for the sort of like stated intention of including councilmember voices. I think any of the committees would certainly be able to coordinate. I think the folks who've been involved are the ones who have served on those committees, generally speaking. So I'll just, I'll just put that out there as a comment for now. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very, very thankful for Councilmember Philippe Cunningham's motion to refer back to committee. That is, I feel like, consistent message I've shared with people about, if it's stuff on Roof Depot, let's bring it to the home committee. If it's stuff about Upper Harbor, let's bring it to the home committee. If it's about Glendale, let's bring it to the home committee. So I feel like this is actually a really good way to signal that togetherness and that respectful approach that Councilmember Gordon was talking about. I do want to acknowledge that, of course, the ones that are up here talking are us and not, right now, not so much the community or the staff. So we are missing layers of the conversation here, which I think could live and have a good place to reclaim space in that home committee work. I wanted to reaffirm and clarify that I also do not oppose the spirit of the resolution. I am more interested in making sure that my 30,000 residents, the Latino community that I represent, the immigrant community that I represent, the immigrant business owners that I represent are reflected in this work. And because this was put together in such a haphazard and disorganized way on Wednesday with a lack of clarity on authorship and process and whether or not we could even put, like, changes on the resolution, I feel like this is going to be a much more significant way to make sure that those voices are reflected uniformly throughout our city. And because this work is so important, and Council President Bender laid out a very compelling case of how significant this vote is and the work of our department, and because of that significance, we should give it its due time and attention and ensure that all of the councilmembers that are here were able to participate in shaping that because we want to make sure that that work is intentional, clear, focused, and that has the attention, the buy-in, the participation and input from staff, from community. I didn't get to see a lot of Latino folks here on Wednesday. I didn't get to see a lot of immigrant business owners here on Wednesday. I didn't get to hear anybody testify in Spanish. And those are the phone calls and the messages that I get that I was not able to put into the resolution on Wednesday because there was simply no time and there was no clarity about who was doing this and when and how, and much less bringing it up today. Again, that committee work is really important. That organized structure gives us buoyancy, it gives us the ability to make sure that the outcomes we're seeking are clear and that they're tangible and that there's a timeline to them and that they make sense with all of the other things that we're juggling and that we have on our hands already. So while I deeply appreciate everybody that came here to testify and everybody who has fire and passion to change, we are also as fiery about that passion and change, but unfortunately, we're elected officials, and so we have to do it in a different way than the way you guys do it. So I feel like we're each playing our part and that together we can really bring forward a process that will have clear results in a timeline that makes sense for all of the people that are involved in this governance work, staff, community, elected officials. So I very much support Councilmember Cunningham's motion and would be happy to vote for that right now.
All right. There's a large number of councilmembers in queue to talk about the motion to postpone. And I know, I just want to acknowledge, we didn't get to folks who had been in queue to talk about the other underlying motion. So I apologize for folks who've been waiting. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, President Bender. And we know how to jump over to the next item if we want to talk on that as well, so you don't need to worry about the stack and that, which I certainly was willing to do. I just mostly wanted to raise one issue about what I think might be happening in terms of our group dynamics up here, and I appreciate that this delay could be a sweet spot. This could kind of get us around something. I'm not sure if it will, we'll have to hear from everybody else, and it could also serve some of this function. But one of the functions of the resolution and the staff direction, and one of the main things it could accomplish if we were to pass it today, would be to allow 13 of us to feel really, really good about voting in support of the new director. And that's kind of the function that it played. Early on, when this came forward, it was pretty clear that some of us had some anxiety and some stress, and there were concerns that we had about it. And there could have been a big battle about the appointment or not, but there was also, like, no, let's figure out how we could each get comfortable and what actions we could take to get comfortable so that we could enthusiastically support this appointment. And we're actually clearly in my mind headed for a unanimous vote on the reappointment, especially if we passed these, the resolution, which may be complicated and not perfect, but is basically harmless. And the staff direction, which I'd say the same about, probably more positive than negative to both of them. But one of the things that would allow then is all of us to more confidently, enthusiastically go ahead and support the reappointment, and not just us. It also would allow more people in the community who had concerns about it to say, oh, on that occasion, they took the opportunity to say they cared about what we care about too. I feel better about this and better about going on and working with CPED and the whole department and the new director because they passed a resolution with some substance, but it wasn't, you know, it's not a major thing for us to do, it's not a new law or anything. And that staff direction, which we do all the time. So that's what we could potentially lose in this postponement. They'll get referred to committee, and I'm not sure what will happen tomorrow, what won't happen to them, but the connection with this moment and the ability to make sure that we are feeling as enthusiastic as we possibly can about the reappointment could be lost.
Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. And I believe we formally separated the two or the three action items. And so if we want to vote down Director Frank's appointment because we're not comfortable, that vote's before us. So, and we'll take that vote and we'll see where it goes. It sounds like that's not going to happen. And I think it's very important that we have disassociated the action of appointment from how we want to move forward. I too agree with my colleagues that see through this list of incredible statements deeply felt and well articulated as value statements moving forward. And so if it's important to do that moving forward, and if these are important values moving forward, why wouldn't we do it collectively? Clearly, it's already been stated by my colleagues that hasn't happened. I could go on about the representation that I am responsible for in terms of small business, medium-sized business, people of color. I think quantitatively, I can show you a map, it'd be without peer. And I could go on and maybe grieve the notion that I haven't been directly involved in any of these documents before us. So the postponement's a really good opportunity, not to find comfort in who we're appointing. I think that's a separate action before us that we formally separated, but to say, this is the work that we are committed to doing and we're going to do it right. Because if it's worth doing, it's worth doing right. It's worth going through our processes, it's worth engaging representatives who fully feel responsible for those who are under their jurisdiction. I also think there's more to what we do with the community than just the city. CPED in many cases leverages resources that far, far exceed what that we allot them. And I think our colleagues that bring the whole point about how this gets done in the budget cycle is really where it should happen. Values, committee work, tease up the budget. The budget allows them to do things. Doing the things we want is really what the community's asking for, and we want to deliver on that. So I really will support this going to the appropriate committee, and I know sometimes there's a split in where it would go. Committee chairs always figure that out, it can go to one or two. But I really want to be engaged in this work. I want to make sure that if there is a staff direction, that it's not just making a committee to talk about things, that it has a budgetary line item, it has specific actions, and it's the things that the community asked for directly. So I will be supporting this motion to do the work that the community's asked us to do in a manner that I can feel comfortable, that our colleagues feel collegial and effective. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been carefully listening to colleagues up here on this and had reviewed the resolution at about 9:26 a.m. today, so it hasn't given me a lot of time to process or digest. But I agree with colleagues in these goals. I would also say, these are things I can say of every department and I think should be enterprise-wide, things that we should be striving for, things like focus on environmental sustainability, evaluating the success of our interventions, building the capacity to make change quickly, increasing innovation. They're all great things, and I think that's why so many colleagues have said they support this. I will go ahead and support this motion because I think this is something that can benefit from the time and the work to really iron out, and hopefully, I believe, make it enterprise-wide as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to point out that we all up here talk about these values, and we've been given some very clear choices. Community didn't talk about these issues last week or the week before. They've talked about it before our elections, they've talked about it for decades, and they've asked for real action. One of the things they've pointed to is the reappointment of the director of one of the departments that handles all of these critical areas for the city. I think we need to be very honest and genuine about that. In my comments, you know, I've thought we have the right leadership and can get there, and we still need to focus on the disparities. I'm okay with the delay, but I think we need to be very real about what we really support and make sure our votes and our actions reflect that.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support all the statements of Councilmember Cunningham. I do think that with more time, we could actually get every councilmember up here comfortable with something that we could all work on together. I do see this as having a number of different owners and taking on a lot more work, so I would offer to help the authors break this apart. For example, I could offer to take on the third piece of the staff direction. I heard Councilmember Gordon wants more data and measurables, so let's do that in the results work of our budget committee, for example. I support breaking this apart and making this more a part of the work that we do through committees. committees. This isn't a council meeting. The very first item or the very first piece of the agenda isn't really the place to go and kind of re-coordinate how this resolution should take place. So I'm supportive of this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Schrader?
Thank you, Council President. Would love to address that. I appreciate the offer to break this out. I think, I do want to highlight that the priority is to work with our talented staff that we think can get us to where we want to be. So in breaking it up, I also don't want to make this bigger than the intention. A lot of these things that we are touched on in the resolution and staff direction are already happening and need to be reflected transparently so community can be involved and know about that. So be happy to work with you kind of on that.
Council Vice President Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam President. Boy, I am, I'm really dismayed by the mischaracterization of council members and their intentions. I think it is incredibly disrespectful to say that trying to improve the work of the city is somehow demeaning to a department head. There's been reference made to the committee of the whole meeting on Wednesday as being contentious, and I would note that the contentious part of that meeting was around the reappointment of Mr. David Frank. We heard from several community members who expressed deep concern about the work of that department. This is an attempt to support Mr. Frank and his leadership of that department, but also respect and incorporate the deep concerns that have, that were expressed at that meeting. This could have been a longer process. It could have gone to the home committees, but to my surprise, it showed up on the committee of the whole agenda without any consultation from me, from either of the three committee chairs. And so, but instead of blasting my colleagues on the dais, I chaired that meeting so that we could have a conversation with our community about the reappointment of a department head. Had those items gone to their home committees, it would have been much more time to have this conversation. We just got this information on Wednesday from our residents, and so consequently, that was the time that we had allotted to incorporate those things into some kind of resolution and staff direction to help move this department forward, to address the issues that are deeply impacting my community on levels that I can't even describe. Minneapolis has the worst disparities in every single category that you can think of to help of life for people of color, particularly Black people in this community. From education to employment to access to housing, access to healthcare, all of these issues. And so I, and for me to sit here and not continue to push for improvement in these areas is a dereliction of my duties.
Thank you, Council Vice President. I think, let's see, Councilmember Ellison?
I want to, I want to sort of put an asterisk on the comments by Council Vice President. I think that that urgency is the kind of urgency that I share, which is why, you know, I felt like it was, which I feel like it is appropriate that we could take these issues up today. And I feel like the language is pretty clear in the staff direction. I think especially is pretty clear. That being said, if, you know, I think that if my top interest is getting the work done and making sure that we address the work. And, and so if the will of the body is to refer these to the committee, then I'd rather have that than to have a motion up here fail because folks were uncomfortable with the procedure, the process. But I just want to know, I do think that, 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 that we should be acting with urgency. And when the Council Vice President is speaking about that urgency, then, then, that she is articulating better than I can why I felt like it was appropriate to bring this forward today. But again, if the will of the body is to, is to, is to refer this to committee for the sake of the work, then I think that that's something that I could live with and I'm happy to, you know, I know that Councilmember Goodman and I always collaborate well when we work together and, and so I, you know, so I definitely am okay with referring it to committee. But just wanted to note and affirm that sense of urgency that we're all hearing up here from Council Vice President and, and, and to say that that urgency is why I felt like it was appropriate to bring this forward today.
I put myself in queue for a couple of reasons. First, I'll take responsibility for referring to committee of the whole. We did start talking about that publicly, going back to even the very first time when the nomination came forward from the mayor, even before we, we actually happened to postpone it at that meeting. So if there was any confusion about that, I take responsibility. The reasoning behind that was because the three committees that CPED reports to have every council member but two on it. And I actually thought those two council members, I think it's Councilman Arcano and Councilmember Osami, just by virtue of the words they represent, also deserve to have, you know, the formal time blocked off to be there to hear comments and questions about this important department head. So I, but I do recognize that that did give very short period of time because when of, because of when COW is scheduled in our meeting cycles. I think there was a lot of concern and question about even the delay that had come up until now about this appointment. One option we would have had would be to have taken this up in two weeks from now. So that's a little just commentary reflection on the scheduling piece, and I'm happy to always talk with colleagues about, about how we can manage our schedules in a way that works best for people. Last time, we had a special joint meeting of the three committees that was scheduled at a special time that members of the public weren't used to. I didn't think that was ideal either. You know, I saw these two items as different. It's partly why I suggested separating them. On, in terms of the resolution, while I recognize the desire of council members to sort of wordsmith or, or add particular detail, these, to me, are very high-level goals that have been articulated many times in many places. Perhaps people have the position that therefore we don't need to take this action, and I would suggest the appropriate action in that case would be just to vote no on the resolution. I took the leadership of these two council members who, who put this together to bring this forward in the way that they stated. I think we go into really dangerous territory when we start to call into question each other's motivations in a public forum. So I'm going to echo that concern and my commitment to ensure that we can continue to work well together and, and with respect for each other's motivations and desires. And really, you know, when, when folks kind of state their intention, I think we should work to give each other the benefit of the doubt that the stated intention is, is the motivating intention. Of these priorities that I see here, I struggle to understand why a council member couldn't support that today. In my mind, this is directly tied to the conversation about leadership in the department because it is a statement of values that we are committing to make together. I had more questions about the second piece, which was the staff direction, but I also trust in the leadership of the two council members who brought it forward. Councilmember Ellison, who serves as vice chair of the two, of two of the committees that CPED reports to and serves on all of the three committees, and Councilmember Schrader, who as Chair of ZMP, has put in an enormous amount of time working with this department, that they would be able to bring this forward, that the steps that would need to be taken to bring these pieces through their appropriate committees, to work with the department, that they would, that they would do those things. So I do, I did share some of the questions I've heard raised about the, you know, about some of the procedures on that one. So that would, that would be the piece that I thought maybe more made sense to start in committee or maybe would refer to committee to give more time. But on the resolution piece, I struggle to see what process or time would really change anything here other than maybe a particular word here or there. And if council members had specific thoughts about that, it seems like we've been talking about this for an hour and a half or so. So perhaps there could have been time to add some offering on the dais as we often do when we have the chance to make amendments or changes. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you. And this is probably very nitpicky and beside the point, but I actually feel like we're four-deep right now and I don't quite understand whether we followed our rules. I don't know where the, why the staff direction isn't sitting before us, and maybe we could still have a motion to table and it would be appropriate. But I just hope next time we don't, we can be aware of this because we are four-deep, and I don't know what happened to the third item.
I can clarify, or the clerk could. We had, we had a move, there was an original motion to move the agenda. Then Councilmember Schrader brought forward the resolution, then Councilmember Ellison brought forward the staff direction, then Councilmember Cunningham combined the two and, and moved to postpone both of them and refer them to the committee. So the current discussion is about Councilmember Cunningham's discussion, which is to refer both the resolution and the staff direction to the EDRS committee in the next cycle. Councilmember Fletcher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was in, I was in queue over in the other column, and it looks like we may not ever get back to me over there because we're going to refer this. So I just, but I, I do just want to speak to one thing because I think, you know, these comments were helpful to me in understanding why people might feel some tension around them. Because I didn't read this as shaming, and I don't read this as shaming, and I wouldn't support it if I did read it as shaming. So I kind of understand why Councilmember Goodman has concerns if that's how you interpret it. I want to say very clearly that I don't, and that that's not my intention or my interpretation. And I, I want to say very clearly that for me, CPED's a huge department, and we're, we're reviewing kind of two years of work that's had ups and downs naturally because there's so much going on. I mean, it's been a very busy time, and I think people are rightly, we heard at the public hearing, a lot of good stories about things that have gone right. There are moments that the activist community that came here would lift up as real examples of, of great work. And there are places where people would look at, at the work and say, this is a place we missed. This is a place that didn't work. And for most people in our city, when they interact with the city, they only interact with one or two things, right? They, they either tried to get a loan that they couldn't get, like they made a phone call that didn't produce a result, or they made a phone call that produced spectacular results. And we heard a mix of all of that. And I think what we heard in the public hearing, for me, was ambiguity about what are we affirming by affirming David Frank's leadership? And we don't want that to be ambiguous. We want to affirm the really great things that we're seeing under David Frank's leadership. We want to affirm the things that we're excited about. We want to affirm the ways that we have supported small business. We want to affirm the ways that we are getting more affordable housing built than we've ever gotten built. We want to affirm the ways that we are innovating and that things are going well, and we want people to feel pride in those things. And this is, to me, the way I saw this resolution and the way I see this resolution is cutting through that ambiguity. So that the people who have anxiety that what we're affirming is a bad experience that they had or a status quo that they experienced where we hadn't moved fast enough towards our goals, that we want to tell everybody, both internally to staff and externally to the community, that that's not what we're intending to affirm, that what we're intending to affirm is the wins. We're intending to, we're intending to affirm the things that are going well, and we see those things. And putting these values down, I think, makes sense as a response to the public hearing that we heard. Because we heard a real mix and we heard a real ambiguity about how people are interpreting the work of the department. And so for me, I liked bringing this forward today. I liked that it was being brought forward today because it feels like a way of clarifying for everybody what we are affirming when we affirm our support for David Frank's leadership and for the work of the department. And so I still kind of hope we do that. I think we can, we can do that through a different process. It sounds like that it might get delayed and if that happens, we'll do it that way. But, but, but that's, for me, the purpose of the resolution and the, the value that it offers to the community. And so I'm supporting the resolution and I'm supporting David Frank, and I'm supporting the really good work that staff and CPED are doing, and thank you all for it.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam President. I've had my thing on and off and on and off determining kind of how upset I want to be. But I will say a few things. Councilmember Gordon's comments made it clear to me that there's a quid pro quo. I'll support the reappointment if you guys pass this resolution. And so that lines up for me where we're at, which is the way that we justify to the advocates that we're going to support David Frank is to also pass this resolution, and that is what I'm uncomfortable with. So that basically answers the question that the council president set out, which is she can't understand why we wouldn't move forward today. That is why. Because I feel like we're operating under an outright quid pro quo. We better say these things about our staff and recommit what we've already committed to in order to reaffirm that David is doing a good job, which, I mean, any one of you who have worked with him know that he's about the most accommodating person because he believes in the work. I also want to note that I did have a conversation with Councilmember Ellison well before we got up to the dais, suggesting that the staff direction would best be handled in committee because then we can put together a work group like we did with the renters' rights policy that sat down with a whole bunch of different department heads and determined what the issues were and how we could address them, and then brought forward some sort of proposal for the budget in the cycle. So I still remain committed to doing that, however this works out. But before this conversation happened, I had suggested this made the most sense in committee anyway. And Councilmember Gordon and Councilmember Fletcher are on the committee. So it seems like we could all participate in that work collectively, and I think that makes some sense. In the end, what rubs me the wrong way is we didn't do this with Robin Hutchinson's appointment. I hope we're not going to do this with the appointment of the Reg Services Director, which is coming up in the next cycle. What we're doing here is different for Mr. Frank than it is for everyone else, which means we're not totally sure if we want to reappoint him. We need to restate our values for the advocates to make sure they understand that we really are saying what we're saying and doing what we're doing. That's what makes me uncomfortable. And then ironically, we've had this long, long conversation where almost every person on the council has spoken, which was what should have happened prior to it coming forward in the first place. And so I would urge us to simply adopt the Cunningham motion, to send these things to committee where we can have honest, transparent conversations that are inclusive of everyone on the council, and everyone is welcome to come to EDRS. We don't have much on our agenda. Maybe this will be referred and we'll take it up right away. We'll have the reappointment of Kim Keller. Many of the things that CPED does on the housing and renters' rights work completely overlap with Kim Keller's department, and she's been one of the many people partnering with Andrea Brennan, Andrew Skildob and David Frank in doing some of the renters' work in the first place. So, Madam President, I want to call the question on the Cunningham motion, not to cut you off. I will call the question after the council president has the last words, which normally would be protocol anyway, I would imagine.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I, you know, we joke about this, but the one thing Councilwoman Goodman and I share is that we, we say the same thing in public as we do in private. When we don't agree, it's pretty clear. But, but I, you know, and so I put myself in queue because I do want to say that, I just want to acknowledge that we have a difference of opinion within the Minneapolis City Council about this appointment, and that's okay. I have a difference of opinion than what some of my colleagues have expressed. I have, on multiple occasions, expressed concern, and I had the chance to work with the director of this department to address my concerns before this moment today. But I have had concerns, and I continue to have concerns, not based on any particular advocacy group or some notion that there's, not that there would be anything wrong with that either, but I, I'm coming to this as a council member that represents a ward that interacts with CPED in a lot of different ways. I have constituents that are looking to me to hold departments accountable and who aren't happy with the direction that things have been going. And I've brought their voice to the table, as is each of our jobs. So I, I just, we have a difference of opinion at this moment about exactly how well things have been going or not, and how much effort it's going to take to get this department to operate in the way that we and our constituents hope, and, and that's okay. But I think trying to gloss over that is actually part of the problem. I think sometimes when we try to be polite or delay things or, you know, brush aside disagreement or difference, that the people who suffer the most are those who are most marginalized in, in the discussions. And so... And so, and that's a statement that's painted with a broad brush, but I say that because we've had a lot of comments and a lot of commentary, and I always want to remind us that it's okay to bring forward the voices of each of our constituents. It's okay to bring forward different ideas and opinions and debate them. It's our job. This is an important appointment. I think the amount of engagement demonstrates how important this is to each of us. And I know that that means, at the end of the day, I've seen this body come together time and time and time again with a shared vision to work out those differences and move forward together. I think in this case, that will happen as we work together to bring, you know, a lot of momentum around each of the different areas that CPED works. And I think to any CPED staff person who's been following this and feels frustrated or just enchanted, again, I just want to reemphasize what the council vice president said. Expressing a desire for profound change isn't, is aspirationally looking forward to the future, and it's something that each and every one of us in the city of Minneapolis must do if we are going to make the changes that we've committed to. And so I think that was the intention of every person who got involved in this discussion, and I think each of my colleagues and the folks who've come to get involved in the staff and Mr. Frank. So Councilmember Goodman has called the question. I don't see anyone else in queue. This is a motion to postpone both of the items and refer them to the EDRS committee in the next cycle. So I will ask the clerk in two cycles. All right. Want me to vote and call the question? All right. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Uh, no.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
No.
Jenkins.
No.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
No.
There are seven ayes and six nays.
That carries, and the item will be referred to the EDRS committee. I do hope Councilmember Schrader, who chairs the zoning and planning committee and who many of us rely on to spend many, many of his evenings on behalf of us on the planning commission, is not on that committee. So I hope that the folks who are will engage with him as one of the authors of this original work out of respect for the time that he has taken and all of the time he takes to support each of us in his role as chair of ZMP. That concludes those additional items from the committee of the whole report, but we did not take up the underlying two items. So that was item number one, which was the reappointment of the director of Planning and Economic Development, Community Planning and Economic Development, and the item on the 2020 census. Is there any further discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the committee of the whole report is adopted. That brings us to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. That report will be given by the chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Madam President, before we start that, I just want to note that I had already agreed with Councilmember Ellison we would walk on the staff direction on Tuesday. So I just want the advocates to know, should you want to participate, we're going to do that on Tuesday. Unless Councilmember Schrader wants to be there, then we can wait a cycle. Rather than postponing it two cycles, we're ready to discuss putting together a committee like the renters' first policy in order to address these issues, and I'm good with, I'm going to keep my word that that was something we discussed prior to coming here today.
We just voted to refer it in two cycles, so I mean...
We can, I'm giving you notice, it'll be a walk-on, I guess is my point. And we can discuss it on Tuesday and then take action in two cycles also.
I would just say if there's no objection, then there's no problem with giving that notice today.
So I just want to note that if anyone is interested, we'll discuss it, we'll come up with a plan. And if there's wanting to wait two cycles, we can do that, but I don't see a reason to do that, given what Councilmember Ellison has shown me. The agenda that we're going, we have nothing on our agenda, by the way, other than Kim Keller's reappointment, but given this, God knows how that's going to go. But nonetheless, that's in front of us on Tuesday. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 10 items for approval today. Liquor license renewals are item number one. Gambling license approvals are item number two. Gambling license renewals are item number three. A rental license reinstatement is four. Contract amendments for right-of-way for emergency and non-emergency board-up services is item five. Deed grants are item six. Great Streets Program eligible areas are item seven. Redevelopment contract for the Alden Smith House, an amendment to that, is item number eight. Item nine are some changes in our sidewalk cafe and food cart, mobile food vending license restrictions for the Hennepin reconstruction in item nine. And granting exclusive development rights extension is item number 10. With that, I'll move all items for approval.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the EDRS report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon. Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report adopted. Next is the report from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward two items. One is a resolution authorizing title registration for city-owned property at 533rd Street South, and the other is approving a restructure of a loan for the Oakland Square Affordable Housing Project. I move both items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee is bringing forward five items for approval today. The first is appointments to the Public Health Advisory Committee. Item number two is authorizing a grant application for, to establish pollinator habitats. Item number three is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Justice Programs for the Inspiring Youth Program, which is a youth intervention program. Item number four is accepting a grant from the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization for Erosion and Sediment Control Enforcement. And item number five is accepting a grant from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and Public Health Accreditation Board for Cross-Sector Innovation Initiative. I will move approval of all five items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman. Is absent. Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. We'll return back to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. I had a quick question, but it's been answered. Councilmember Johnson will give the report as the committee chair.
Thank you, Madam President. The Intergovernmental Relations Committee brings forward two items today on the report. The first is amending the 2020 legislative agenda and policy positions to add in the American Indian Center's request of $7.6 million for renovation and expansion of their current facility. I'll just note that that was on our previous agendas, and it just got missed with some draft updates. So it's really more of a technical, just to make sure it continues on with our agenda. And then item number two is opposition to implementation of the public charge rule. And I'll go ahead and move both.
Councilmember Johnson has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman is absent. Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. And the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee brings forward four items today. One is authorizing a contract amendment with Corner House Inter-Agency Child Abuse Evaluation Center for forensic interview services. Item number two is authorizing a contract with Dakota County Technical College for emergency and non-emergency vehicle training for police officers. Item number three is authorizing a contract amendment with Hennepin County Sheriff's Office for the pre-trial detention fees. And the final item is authorizing a release of liability, hold harmless and defense, and indemnification agreement with Hennepin County for maintenance responsibilities relating to the workforce director system. I'll stand for any questions.
Councilmember Kano has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the report from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 12 items today for full council consideration. Item one is the Southwest Wyndham Residential Street Reconstruction Project, a series of items to move that forward. Two likewise is an areaway abandonment for 2303 Kennedy Street Northeast, to move forward with that project. Three is a contract amendment with Meyer Contract Incorporated for Mid-City Industrial Reconstruction Project. Four is a contract with Bolton &amp; Bank for engineering and design service for the residential neighborhood reconstruction project of that area. Five is the gift acceptance of the Globe and Mail lodging, flight, and food-related expenses for the Globe Drive Mobility Summit. Six is the East Lake Special Service District appointments. Seven is the Dinkytown Special Service District appointments. Eight is the Bloomington Lake Special Service District appointments. Nine is the Stadium Village Special Service District appointments. Ten is the West Broadway Improvement Special Service District appointments. All appointees are listed. Eleven is the bid for reinforced concrete pipe. And 12 is the bid for reinforced manhole structures. Both are sold bids, but they were reviewed for cost consistency. Madam President, I move all items as submitted.
Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Reich has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender. Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is a report from the Ways and Means Committee, given by the chair, Councilmember Worsami.
There you go. Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee brings 10 items for approval today. Item number one is a legal settlement claim of HS-Tow. Item number two is a legal settlement workers' compensation claim of Milagros Ramos. Item number three is an amicus status in lawsuits challenging federal administration immigration-related policies. Item number four is a contract amendment with Morcon Construction, Inc. for the Minneapolis Convention Center Plaza renovation project. Item number five is revisions to Minneapolis Convention Center permit for occupancy form contract. Item number six is the fourth quarter 2019 donation report. Item number seven is a gift acceptance from Comcast, MBC, Universal, CenterPoint Energy, Alina Health, Blue Cross Blue Shields of Minnesota, SPIN, S-P-I-N, Lyft, Nice Ride, and Lime for the Community Connections Conference to be held February 1, 2020. And item number eight is 2020 non-represented employee salary schedule. Item number nine is a 2020 politically-appointed employee salary schedule. And the final item is the collective bargaining agreement to professional employees' unit 2020 through to 2022, and I move approval of all 10 items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the Ways and Means report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
through to 2022, and I move approval of all 10 items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the Ways and Means Report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. That, do we not have ZMP? There's no ZMP report this time. That brings us to the reports of the special committees. We do have a report from the Executive Committee this cycle presented by Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee brings forth seven items for consideration today. Items number one through three are the appointed positions in the Finance Department, 911 Department, and the City Coordinator's Office. The motion is to refer these three to the Ways and Means Committee. Items number four through six are mayoral appointments to be referred to the appropriate committees for the setting of a public hearing. Item number four is the reappointment of Macy Wheeler to the Civil Service Commission. Item number five is the reappointment of Barrett Lane as the Director of Emergency Management. Item number six is the reappointment of Patrick Todd as the City Assessor. Item number seven is referring to Ways and Means Committee a collective bargaining agreement with the Convention Center Production Technicians Unit. I move the Executive Committee report for approval.
Council Vice President Jenkins has moved the Executive Committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Carries and those items are adopted. I'll just note that each of those different Committee referrals is noted in our printed agenda. Many of those items will be referred to the Ways and Means Committee. The reappointment of the Director of Emergency Management will be referred to the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, and the reappointment of the City Assessor will be referred to the Ways and Means Committee. That concludes the special committees. That brings us to the next order of businesses, which is the Notice for Ordinance Introductions. We have two notices being given today. The first is from Councilmember Goodman, giving notice to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance establishing the Summit House Housing Improvement Area and imposing fees to pay for housing improvements within that area. Second, Councilmember Johnson gives notice that he will introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance amending and adding provisions related to food catering. Are there any questions on those notices? Seeing none, those notices are given and no further action is required. The next item is our, in our agenda, is the introduction and referral calendar. We have two introductions this morning. Pursuant to prior notice, Councilmember Johnson moves to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee the subject matter of an ordinance amending provisions for the code related to service fees for wreckers and tow trucks. Second, Councilmembers Kano and Gordon move to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code to prohibit the sale and manufacture of animal fur products. Are there any questions or comments about those introductions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed say no. That carries and that resolution is adopted. The next order of business is unfinished business. We do have one item under, is everything okay? Does someone want to make a comment? Sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm getting some questions from colleagues, which I'm happy to answer. I do want to just, the next item of business is, is under unfinished business. We do have one, which is a veto of billboard ordinance that came through. And then as you're describing that, I'll just take any questions I have from colleagues on other items. Thanks.
Madam President, this matter is being returned to the City Council because it was vetoed by Mayor Frye. The mayor's veto in his letter explaining his position are included in your briefing materials, and pursuant to City Charter Section 4.4(c), all official acts of the City Council are subject to the approval or the disapproval of the mayor. If the mayor vetoes an act, it must be returned at the next regular meeting of the full City Council, and at that time, the council may, by a two-thirds vote of its membership, override and approve the original act, notwithstanding the mayor's veto. If a two-thirds vote is not achieved, then the veto of the mayor is sustained and the original act is defeated. It's my understanding that this particular proposal moved from the Planning Commission to the Zoning and Planning Committee, that there was an intention to refine certain provisions in terms of allowable uses, and that an amendment to that effect was made but ultimately defeated at the Zoning and Planning Committee. Subsequent to that meeting, when it was before the full City Council, there was confusion amongst members whether or not the amendment had failed a committee and whether that had been incorporated. As a consequence, and at the request of Councilmember Worsami, the mayor did disapprove the original act, which places it once again before the full council. There is an automatic motion placed in front of the council, and that motion is this: Shall the ordinance be enacted, notwithstanding the veto of the mayor? An affirmative vote on that question that's carried by two-thirds of the membership, which would be nine votes, would overturn the veto and pass the original ordinance as it was done two weeks ago. A negative vote on the question will sustain the mayor's veto, and if that mayor's, the veto is sustained, then the council will have the opportunity to take further action in considering the underlying proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And just to underscore that point, sustaining the mayor's veto would mean that this item could come back through the Zoning and Planning Committee in future cycles. Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President, for clarifying that. I wanted to reiterate, the preferred vote, from my point of view, would be to sustain the veto of the mayor, who then would allow us to bring back what I would call Councilmember Reich's suggestion that was passed in committee, but there was confusion on, and I'll look to the clerk to make sure I'm correct in that.
Madam President, the amendment that was brought forward was actually defeated at committee. It didn't pass a committee.
Oh, because nothing...
But this would allow, if the mayor's veto is sustained, this council then could refer the matter back to zoning and planning, and that could be done.
So the vote to, is to sustain the veto, correct? Which would be a no vote?
Which would be a no vote.
Right.
And, Mr. Clerk, to do the second piece, which is reviving the ordinance back at ZMP, would you like us to take formal action today to refer the items to ZMP?
After the vote on the veto is taken.
After the vote on the veto. Thank you. Is there any, is there any further discussion on the item before us, which is the mayor's I'll just reiterate, just in case this is confusing, from, from my perspective, I appreciate Mayor Frye working collaboratively with the council to veto an item that I don't think reflected the intention of what came forward through our committee and council process. So as this comes back through committee, I know councilmembers have different positions on the underlying billboard ordinance. This will give more time to, to debate those details as well. I haven't been supportive of these changes generally, but I'll be supporting the veto today in order to make sure that at least what was intended to pass through the council is the final action. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
No.
Ellison.
No.
Goodman.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Palmasano.
No.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
No.
Reich.
No.
Fletcher.
No.
Jenkins.
No.
Schrader.
No.
Worsami.
No.
President Bender.
No.
There are 13 nays.
So override fails, meaning that we have sustained the mayor's veto, with appreciation to the mayor. Councilmember Schrader.
I just wanted to thank my colleagues for, you know, I mean, thank you to Councilmember Schrader for putting me in queue. I just want to thank my colleagues for entertaining this motion and supporting, you know, the billboard issue has been going on for a long time, and it's not the most sexy or one of the big things that we fight over, but I appreciate my colleagues for continuing this so we can get it right. So thank you very much for that.
With that, I can move to refer the item back to the Zoning and Planning Committee.